Good evening, everyone. We are actually, until we have a quorum, we're going to start with our board workshop. And the board workshop will be the high school design update. Superintendent?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. We will begin with our board workshop. And just before we get started, just want to introduce everyone here that's going to also share some of the content on the presentation. Dr. Vasquez Matos, Deputy Superintendent. Dr. Garcia Blocker, Executive Director of Schools overseeing the majority, actually, all of the high schools that are part of this redesign work. And then Justin Taylor, our Assistant Director of Education Initiatives and Innovation. I'm going to frame some of the context leading up to the redesign work that they are going to present on. And Christina, do I have a clicker?
So this is part of, the roots of this work are, of course, grounded in the district model of excellence, which envisions, of course, that all of our students are going to graduate ready to transform our world. If we look back two and a half years when the board, you all took the vote to implement the DME, we know that there have been significant strides in our work. We have been able to maintain the integrity of all of those structural changes. And specifically around this work, we engaged for, actually, the last 18 months in extensive data collection, reflection, and action planning to understand and address some of the programmatic changes that had to take place at the high school level. And so there were specific guiding questions that we engaged constituents around. One is what are the skills and the dispositions that our students have to have in order to graduate? And then how do we ensure that our instructional practices and our curricula directly align to the competencies our students have to master before they leave us and then when they achieve post-secondary success? We also aim to identify what the research and then other districts can teach us about how to best support students as they transition into high school. And then how do we create relevant and engaging high school experiences for our students? And lastly, and this is some of the work and conversations that we've had recently, is how do we more effectively serve our most at-risk students? From, you know, those students that are traditional high school experience, just is not yielding the positive outcomes. And so those five essential questions guided a lot of the data that we collected and reflected on. So you're going to hear today answers to some of those questions. And I just want to give us just a brief overview of the timeline that we have engaged in there. I won't go deep into the details, given that I was told let's stick to a 30-minute presentation timeline to engage then in Q and A, but do feel free to stop me if you want me to dive deeper. So Phase One was a self-assessment that was done to look at the initiatives taken to date as to how this project specifically is going to contribute to actions. Phase Two, we did engage deeply with student data, and I also have to frame that this was as a result of the grant that we received from the BAR Foundation. If you recall, we had Grant One from the BAR Foundation, which was to look at, you know, what is it that we need to do in order to ensure post-secondary success? This is also informed Phase Three, which was reflecting and prioritizing based on what the data told us. And then, of course, where we are just finishing, which is Phase Four, the action planning. I want to call attention to a slide that you have seen before. This was one of the slides that we dove deep in as a result of the work that the BAR Foundation funded to partner, for us to partner with EY Parthenon, which was the partner in our data analysis. And essentially, as you can see, what we looked at was where, this is for the class of 2016, and so we wanted to know where were 2016 graduates two years after they graduate, they graduated. So it was students that were in school or not in school two years after they left us in 2016. And so what you see here is that although 79% of our students graduate, graduated high school, only 50%, of those enrolled in post-secondary education. And of those 50 that enrolled, 32% of them persisted into their second year of high school. And so we then decided to dig even deeper into the data so that we can identify what we termed early warning indicators. And so based on all of the qualitative, quantitative data, we also engaged qualitatively as well. And so we were able to narrow in on identifying students who are at risk for failing off-track for post-secondary success as soon as they arrive in ninth grade. And so, you know, the EWEs, as you know, over the course of high school, what we found with that dataset is that 83% of students with an early warning indicator at any point in their high school career fall off-track for post-secondary success. This work, I'm gonna, this is another way of looking at that data, but I'm gonna skip that one. You can, just so that I can get to who it was that we engaged and the different types of voices that we engaged in for the understanding, the backdrop of the quantitative data. And so this was more of the qualitative work that we did. And so we engaged with stakeholders, specifically with our students in eighth, ninth, and 12th grades. We wanted to know with regard to the rigorous and relevant academic experiences that our students were having, how we can deepen the student engagement and also provide the curriculum supports to meet not only academic behavior but also social needs? And then how to ensure that we provide college and career-ready opportunities for our students? Some of you are aware and actually participated in the initiated conversations specifically throughout, you know, our citywide town halls and all-call meetings with specific constituents. And so we took many of the questions that we raised with the students and the staff to our community, our industry, and higher ed partners. And through those conversations, we heard very specific trends, and that is that we needed to develop clear graduation competencies that prepared our students for post-secondary and college success. We also heard how important it is to have transition planning from the eighth to the ninth grade, and the willingness of our community partners to engage with us in providing and supporting our summer bridge program opportunities. And then, then, we also needed to reimagine our high school programming to ensure that it was aligned to industry standards and, of course, the demands of higher education. So that's all backdrop to where we are today, which is, given all of the data and the sources from multiple stakeholders and the groups, lots of action planning has taken place. And so that's what we're going to learn a little more about tonight. And I think you might need the, thank you.
Before we actually proceed on, we're going to take a pause before we dive into the actual workshop, just so that we can take matters of the special meeting. So I will call the special meeting to order, starting with the Business Agenda. We're good. You're gonna do a roll call? Or we're good?
No, I was taking it.
Okay. Thank you.
Si alguien necesita la aducción, tenemos alguien disponible en el esquina allí.
So the recommended action is the motion that the Hartford Board of Education accepts and adopts the 2020-21 district calendar. However, for that motion, due to coordination with the city, we will need to table this item 2.1 until the March 17th meeting. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I will turn it over to Superintendent, just for a little bit more information regarding that.
Yes, and this is more of technical background checking that we have to do, given that there is a potential implication on the payroll schedule for 12- and 10-month employees. And so we want to make sure that there is alignment with all parties.
Are there any questions or debate? Seeing none, there was a motion that was made in second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Business Agenda 2.2, the recommended action is that the motion that the Hartford Board of Education appoints Kimberly Oliver to serve on the Hartford School Building Committee in place of Julio Flores. Is there a second? Is there a motion? Excuse me.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions and/or debates? The motion has been made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Business Agenda Item 2.3, Approval of Burns Renovation. The recommended action is the Hartford Board of Education approves the schematic design drawings and authorizes the architect to submit the documents for the above- referenced school project to the Office of School Construction Grants for the review and approval. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to give it to the Superintendent for further information.
If there are any specific questions, we do have representatives here that can answer our questions from Arcadis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Troya Hannah from Arcadis ONG CNI.
And Paul Jorgensen with Silver Petroselli Architects, project architect.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, there, a motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone want to pack it?
Yes. Yeah, oh, you can just. Okay. So I'm gonna give it to Superintendent. She can add just a little bit more detail. We have reviewed it. So just for those in the public, we have reviewed it and asked a lot of questions. So for content for those who do not know, Superintendent, you can give a little bit more information.
Yes. So just as part of the DME work, this is a phased project, beginning with next August, where we will have our pre-K magnet classrooms added, and then followed by the next phase, which is the entire renovation of the entire facility. And so we are very on track to have four pre-K classrooms, starting in August, to kind of kick-start the larger renovation.
Thank you, Superintendent. We'll move back to our workshop session, Equity and Excellence.
Back to the team. And again, just to frame that, the conversations and the presentations relate to all secondary curricular design work, but specifically the pathways as it relates to our three comprehensive high schools.
Okay. So I'm gonna pick up here, and the Superintendent gave us a lot of data to think about. And given all of the data that we sourced from these, got you. Given all of the data that we sourced from multiple stakeholder groups, as well as the solutions that were offered by various community stakeholders in the previous slide, two implications for our post-secondary success planning work emerged, and this is really what has guided our work under the BAR Foundation grant. And so that first implication is to ensure that no ninth-grade student fails, not by lowering standards but by strategically increasing supports. And then the second implication that emerged was to develop a shared vision of rigor across the district and a vision of what it means to be a Hartford Public Schools graduate. So much of the BAR Foundation work that we're engaged in currently is captured in this slide, and we're going to talk mostly about high school design, but I want to provide some context in two other buckets of work. One is the portrait of a graduate and the other is an instructional vision. So several years ago, we began, through a different work group, to begin thinking about the competencies that are required in order for our students to be successful once they graduate from high school. At that time, we had done some work around mastery-based learning and personalized learning and student-centered learning. Fast forward two years, that work was ongoing, but the BAR Foundation really reignited the opportunity to explore what do we mean by a vision of a Hartford Public Schools graduate? What are the skills and dispositions that we want our students to have in order to be successful once they graduate? And so those are captured in our portrait of a graduate. You have in front of you a handout that's a one-pager, front and back. It captures some of those dispositions. So you'll notice that there are five competencies that we've called out. These competencies have been worked on over the course of the last two years with numerous stakeholder groups, administrators, teachers, students, parents, community stakeholders, industry partners, higher ed partners. And this is what, you know, the consensus emerged, that these were the competencies that mattered most. On the backside of that document, you'll see some additional language about what does it mean to be a problem solver, for example, or a team player? We are now implementing these competencies across 10 classrooms in the district in order to get some additional feedback as teachers use the rubrics and as students give feedback on whether or not the rubrics are helpful in guiding them with specific feedback. And we intend to launch the Portrait of a Graduate across the district in the next school year. So in addition to that work, we've also done a lot of work on our instructional vision. It's at a slightly different stage of work, so you have a one-pager in front of you as well that outlines or captures what we've identified as some of the core principles of our, of high-quality teaching and learning. Just to give you a sense of where that work is, will be going and what we've done in order to get to where we are today, we've arranged a work group of about 15 people representing K through 12 administrators and teachers, as well as some central office personnel, who have come together to identify high-quality teaching and learning practices. We intend to make this a tool for individual teachers, in particular, as well as administrators to use, to guide providing high-quality teaching and learning opportunities to all students across the district. The work that we're doing here tonight and talking about is really our high school design work. That's going to serve as the foundation for the rest of our slides. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Garcia Blocker, who will walk through freshman academy and career pathways.
Good evening. So the reason for designing our comprehensive high schools so that they have freshman academies and career pathways is to organize the learning experiences for students. And so the number-one indicator of whether or not a student is going to graduate from high school in four years is whether or not he or she is on track to go on to 10th grade. Whether or not a ninth grader has the requisite credits to become a sophomore is the single greatest indicator of whether or not he or she will graduate on time. And so I will talk momentarily about freshman academies, but that's the reason why freshman academies are important, because the experiences are organized in such a way to best ensure that all of those ninth graders go on and become 10th graders. As far as career pathways, that's another way to organize the learning for our young people so that it is focused on what they are interested in. Again, to keep them interested, motivated, to come to school and engage in their coursework and go on and graduate in four years. So here's the timeline for our work this year for the development of freshman academy and career pathways. So during Phase One, which we just completed, which took place from November to February, we had a high school design task force. And the focus of that group was to conduct site visits and research the core tenants that we want in all of our freshman academies and career pathways, no matter which high school they are in. We are now embarking on Phase Two, which is the school site planning. So we're moving from that district-level team to now teams, which I will talk about momentarily, at Weaver, Buckley, Hartford Public, and Kinsella. And their role is to develop specific programming that will incorporate the core tenants. And then lastly, Phase Three is going to take place over the course of two years. And so in the fall, we are going to start to implement a career pathways and freshman academies in all of our schools. And then there's another set of career academies, career pathways, that are going to be implemented the following year. So Phase One, just to give you an overview of Phase One, and that was the High School Design Task Force. Our goal as a district team was to conduct our site visits and research the core tenants. And so what you see here is a listing of the dates that this district task force met. You can see that we met at all three of our comprehensive high schools, and there were three rounds of site visits that we all attended. And so we would go out on a bunch of site visits, come back, have a meeting, talk about what we saw, refine our work, go back out for another set of site visits, so forth and so on. So you have the calendar there. To give you a sense of the depth and breadth of the committee members, that's what the next slide shows you here. So each of the high schools had their principal and an assistant principal. And this is the assistant principal who is going to oversee the freshman academies next year. So each of them had that level of leadership at the table. They also had their community partners as part of the district-level task force. You can see there are a variety of central office team members that were part of the task force. And then at the bottom, those are not at the bottom of the list, they just happen to be at the bottom of the list. These are our partners that really go across the board. Okay. So for research and preparation for site visits, so this is what we did as a district task force. So at the start of our work, we did some research, and we looked at the Department of Labor data, as well as the middle school and high school career interest inventories to take a look at what our young people are interested in, but also what are the high-demand careers in the state of Connecticut? And they are healthcare, IT, business, and manufacturing. And so the career interests of our middle school and high school students, interestingly, align very nicely to the high-demand careers in the state of Connecticut. Prior to going out on our site visits, we developed a look-for's tool. That tool, which I will show you momentarily, provided a way for us to be focused on our visits. There were many visits we went on, and we needed to make sure that all of us were looking at things very similarly. And then lastly, when we selected the site visits, we selected site visits and then planned for the implementation of the core tenants. And so if you take a look at the next slide, these are the site visits that were organized this year during that time period. So those schools, you can see, we went, we were in Connecticut, we went to Rhode Island, and we looked at schools in Massachusetts. And so those schools listed there were schools that have model freshman academies. And so we wanted to take a look at the variety of freshman, way they implemented freshman academies. And then these are the schools listed that all, that we wanted to look at, career pathways. These are schools that are much further along than we are with full implementation of a variety of different career pathways. And then the document that you see there to the left is the look-for's tool that the district-wide task force created, because we really needed to have a protocol that all of us followed when we went out on our site visits. And so these are the core tenants. So there were lots of, there were lots of visits that we did, meetings, conversations, and we landed in this place where these are the core tenants. And the reason why these core tenants are important is because when the schools, which I will speak to momentarily, start to develop their freshman academies and start to develop their career pathways, you know Buckley, Weaver, Hartford High, and Kinsella are three different, four different schools, four different cultures. We wanted to make sure that no matter what school a child went to, he or she was going to have a set of experiences in freshman academy or in a career pathway across the board, no matter which school they attended. So these are the core tenants for the freshman academy aligned to the DME. So in the area of teaching and learning, a strong piece is that there is a freshman seminar offered to all students in the career, in the freshman academy. One of the things that we also saw, which is very important, is we have to pay attention to the academic interventions needed for ninth graders. And that is the work that Dr. Torres Rodriguez referred to, the early warning indicators. So we're going to take a look at the early warning indicators of all of our incoming ninth graders and schedule the academic interventions accordingly. We're not going to do this after the fact, after they've arrived. We know the students who are struggling in math, we know the students who are struggling in English, we know the students who are chronically absent. We'll have this data in advance so that we can plan accordingly and be intentional about scheduling those opportunities, those interventions. It's important that we have a way for the students in the freshman academy to be exposed to the various career pathways in their schools so that they can make an informed decision coming out of ninth grade, what kind of direction they want to go into. Family and community partnerships is listed there. Very important for us to have solid transition plans for our eighth to ninth-grade students, and it will be key for them and their parents coming into high school to understand what are the requirements for them to graduate with a Hartford Promise Scholarship. And to always keep that at the forefront. They need to understand where they are every time grades come out or attendance comes out, where they are with respect to earning the Hartford Promise Scholarship. In the area of school culture and climate, there are a sequence of events that we want to make sure every single ninth grader attending these four high schools has. Now, schools can go beyond that, but there are a set of core events that we want to make sure every freshman student experiences. And then in the area of operational effectiveness, key, the staffing. You need, the principals need to understand your best teachers really need to be in the ninth grade. And so, and there are certain skill sets that they need to have. Also, in the area of operational effectiveness, teacher teaming and common planning time must, must, must be scheduled. And so there are three ways teachers really need to meet. They need to meet as a grade level, so you need the ninth-grade teachers meeting with the ninth-grade teachers, 10th-grade teachers, so forth and so on. The pathway and academy teachers need to meet as a group. And then the last group of teachers are the, they need to meet by content. So the math teachers, no matter if they're teaching Algebra I or AP Calculus, they also have to meet. And so we have to be intentional about the master schedule and making sure that we are planning within the schedule for those meetings to happen. Those are meetings that not, can't just happen by happenstance. They have to be built into the master schedule. And so the same work happened in the area of career pathways, and so these are the core tenants. Again, no matter which pathway a student is in, in which school, these are the core tenants minimally, that must be a part of each pathway, again, aligned to the DME. So it is extremely important that students be able to have and earn industry-recognized credentials. So the coursework has to be sequenced in such a way that by the time the students need to take an exam to earn a credential, they have what they need to do that. And so that's where advisory boards that include industry and higher ed are extremely important, because they are the ones that help us to understand what our curriculum is supposed to look like. What are the experiences students are supposed to have? What are the experiences students are supposed to have if they're supposed to come out of here and be caught, be ready to enter an engineering program at the university level? So the industry and higher education folks are going to be key in terms of their advisory boards to help us understand what our curriculum is supposed to look like, what experiences students are supposed to have, so that when they sit for an exam, at the end of that, they are successful and they actually earn an industry-recognized credential that is marketable. And so the advisory boards will help us with that. In terms of family and community partnerships, every student in these pathways must have a work-based learning experience, up to and including paid internships, which are also happening right now. There are a number of students at Hartford High in the engineering pathway who have paid internships, and we have people ready to provide paid internship opportunities for students in our other schools. We just have to make sure we have all of our ducks in order to make sure our young people are internship-ready. And so their college and career experiences that they need to have. School culture and climate, those items are listed there. And then in the area of operational effectiveness, those items are listed there. Okay, I'm rushing through to make sure I keep with my 10 minutes. Career pathways. So we've done our research, and these are the career pathways that are going to be offered at the, at the four schools. So in 2021, which is the fall, you see that these are the pathways at Buckley, Hartford Public, Weaver, and Kinsella. I do want to call out that the leadership and public service pathway at Buckley is really going to focus on education, and this is a way for Hartford to grow its own teachers. School counselors, school psychologists, again, partnerships right now with higher ed for these young people to leave right from here. We have Central at the table as their higher, as their higher ed industry partner and others to welcome these young people right out of this pathway, straight into a teacher ed program, hopefully with the Hartford Promise Scholarship, ready to come back and work in Hartford Public Schools. And then we have those pathways coming online in 21, 22. Now, the ones that are coming online in 21, 22, I don't want anyone to think that no work is being done on that, but please note that we want to be intentional and be effective. And so our focus is on the ones on top. But for example, journalism and media, we have conversations that are about to start here at Weaver to ensure that even though we don't have a fully fleshed-out pathway, we really do need to have our young people in the radio station. We really do need to have them owning the work of what it means to be on a radio program. And so I don't want anyone to think that we're not doing any work in the 21, 22 pathways. They just are not getting the attention that the 20, 21 pathways are getting. And so here we are, moving on to Phase Two, and this is my last slide. And so this is the school site planning. So all of that work was the work that we engaged in up until February with the district task force. Now it's time for the school-level teams to work. Now that they have the core tenants in hand, now they go to do their work. And so there are going to be two planning teams at each of our, at each of the four schools that I named. There will be a group of freshman, that's focused on developing the freshman academy. And then there's another group that's going to be focused on developing the 20, 21 career pathway. And so the planning teams include administrators, teachers, school, there, it's there. It's important that students are at the table and that they have their industry or higher ed partner at the table. And that the way the work is going to be organized is the teams are going to be meeting. We're going to have a two-day retreat to launch this, because we want to make sure that everybody is on the same page. Then there's the release, go and do your work. We're going to be very clear about what deliverables they need to have. We're going to bring the groups back, do a check-in, make sure everybody's on track, go away, do your work, come back, so that by the, by the end of the summer, we're ready to implement freshman academies in these four schools, as well as the career pathways.
So thank you for the great work that you guys have done. I really appreciate the strategy and intentionality that appears to have gone into this work. I have a few questions, but my, I'm going to focus on my bigger question. So you talked about the comprehensive high schools, and Kinsella obviously is also included, and I should, I should say, obviously. Because my question is, but this is not all of our high schools. Or is it, could you speak a little bit to that decision? Is it going to be phased in? It's like, how exactly is that going to work across all of our high school programs in this district?
So with regard to the core tenants and the actual freshman academy model, it's something that we want to scale across. This is where we have to start, specifically because if you recall back to the DME, there were times in which I was saying, we don't necessarily have a high school strategy. And so this is part of our foundational high school strategy from a structural redesign perspective. There is good work that is happening and that is already established across the high school magnets that are already online. And so it's a matter of us kind of stepping back and identifying, what could we identify as potential credentials for those pathways, those themes that already exist? So for example, I'm trying to think of SMSA, sports, right? Those are, it's, it's shorter, and I don't want to use the word easier, but it's less intense, the work that has to be done, because those are already established. And so we needed to just, you know, one, leverage the resources that we had and the support from the bar. And then the fact that our comprehensive high schools didn't really have an identity, and we had taken big steps to put those together as one comprehensive high school. Weaver, as, as we all know, were separate, and then we brought those back under one code. Hartford High, the same thing. And so the plan is, these are, these are best practices. The core tenants, freshman academies, they're best practices that the research says should be happening. In terms of the smaller academies, themed academies at the magnets, you know, that was also another strategy. And research shows that that also works for students. We just wanted to have students in our comprehensive high schools also have those experiences.
So one of the other things I'd like to add, new coming in, and so my conversations with the principals of the comprehensive high schools in particular, is that we all want to make these schools destination schools. And not schools where people feel like it's the booby prize because you didn't get into a magnet school. We want our seventh graders, our eighth graders to see something in these pathways, see something in what these young people are doing, and say, you know what, I really want to go to Weaver. Or I really want to go to Buckley because I want to become a teacher.
Coupled with work that is grounded in what the research says works best for students as they transition into high school, coupled with what industry is telling us, with what higher ed is telling us, and with what our students and their Naviance surveys and feedback are also telling us in terms of the interest.
I have a question. I want to echo my colleagues' comments around just great research that was done here. When you look at the high school or the pair of high schools that you did the research around, do you guys have any indication of what their kind of graduation rate, kind of like that progress from ninth grade to graduation to sophomore year in college?
For the comprehensive high schools?
Yes.
Yes, we have it for all. We have it for the comprehensive high schools and for the, the magnets. And so, you know, the, the rate of one graduation and the rate of persistence, because remember, we were looking at persistence in year two post-secondary, is much, much higher in magnets than in, in non-magnets. It is also higher for non-resident students than resident students. And I can send you the additional, this slide deck that we used early on that has those additional data points.
Yeah, I guess my question is, when you take a look at this as the best practices, does this get us to where we want to be? Right, if we're, if this is the measurements that we're using, do these best practices achieve the goal that we want for our students and our kids?
So that is what the research and the practice says works best, specifically for students that have those early warning indicators?
Well, I guess I want to make a distinction between working best and achieving the goal. So it could work best, but does it achieve our goal? That's what I'm asked. I guess that's what I'm getting to.
The, the goal around, one, getting students to transition to high school, stay on track in ninth grade, persist throughout, on track, graduate, that's what we're, that's what we're aiming for.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. When we look at what the magnets, the experience that our students are having in magnets, which, you know, have many of these experiences, we know it works for, for students.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, so I have a question around the equity and excellence and kind of the paid internships that are trending. I think that that's an awesome opportunity for our students, but when I'm thinking about a differentiator in terms of climbing the socioeconomic ladder, I'm thinking about access to college courses early on. You're talking about destination-themed schools, right? So I haven't seen it explicitly named here, but I would love to hear more about how are we allowing our students at these particular high schools to access college education for free early on?
Dr. Garcia Blacker, can you speak to, or whichever, the recent addition that I asked for in terms of the actual absolute requirement for, I know the question is around opportunity and access, and I want actual enrollment, so. Only because we just talked about that recently.
So as part of, as part of our, as part of our strategic planning for next year, we had to identify, actually lift department goals that support the entire DME. So one of the goals that we lifted is actually making sure that in these high schools that, that at a minimum, there are five AP or, and/or college-bearing courses that students will have access to with a minimum of 60 students per school, per school enrolled in those courses, which means that we are now actually increasing opportunities of students actually taking advanced placement courses or credit-bearing courses with partnerships with the universities, but also, also giving a quantitative number that we want to see at least a minimum of 60 students enrolled in those courses for next year, which means that we would have to increase AP programming in many of our schools, but also aligning it to the career pathways, so it becomes actually meaningful. So we already started those conversations with some of the community colleges, so actually it'll become free for them, but also for them as part of the Naviance or kind of the advisory work is also understanding how this supports financial support when they go into post-secondary success, right? As many courses, college-bearing courses they can take in high school, that's actually dollars in their pockets, right? That, that we are actually going to support families and students as we move forward.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
So, and, and to piggyback, those credit-bearing courses, I have a college student who was like, those credits are like for real. And it, and it, and it was a few of them, so that, those are very important. So those opportunities are, I look to for our students, because they're, they're in class and they're being told that, but when they get to college, those credits are on their transcript, so that's real. What, my question, though, is more around, because we'll, we see this freshman academy type thing resurface every few years, right? Is, I've, and I think what I was, I was like Guinea pig, a Guinea pig in Weaver, coming from Foxmeadow with that same sort of thing. Like, they told us you were randomly picked, and when you got over to Weaver, they called it core, and it was two groups of it. And we took our core classes with the same students for two years. So it was ninth and it was 10th grade. It didn't really have a career component to it, but they did, some of the electives were kind of hinting that way. But I am hoping, I guess, is the right word, that we, like, we reinvent this every so often. So I'm hoping that this freshman academy that's presented tonight is more of something that's embedded in a way that it's not like this program that we had. We tried it out for a few kids and it kind of like didn't work out. I'm hoping that it's deeply rooted in what we do as a system, that it is just part of what we do. Because we've, I've seen the freshman academy thing come up over the years, and it might be named a little something different. So that's what I'm looking forward to and expecting, but great work.
Just want to add that there are two parallel tracks with this design work. And to your point, Ms. Brody, yes, it is the student experience, but it's also the adult experience. We also have to be mindful of what the research tells us, that adults learn best when they're working with, you know, and learning from one another. And that is something that when we engaged early on, before the DME recommendations were made, it is what we heard throughout the conversations from our teachers, that they did not have built into the schedule time for them to collaborate, collaborate around their practice. And so this is another way of making sure that structurally, to your point, that it's not just a program, that the entire schedule, the school budget, all of those pieces, you know, are structured around this design work.
So my question actually, it was the sustainability of the actual program. So I think it's great, the freshman academy. I think it's an opportunity for us to really hone into what we're going to do with our young people in bridging that gap from our middle school active age to the high school. But I'm, I'm concerned about what happens once they get to sophomore, once they become juniors, because if they're having an academy that's set in place and probably very structured, how things are going to look, teachers, you just said, the best teachers are going to be put into the freshman year, what's happening when now, you know, they're junior and now things are changing, bodies change, all of that, they're going to need something, some sustainability to happen throughout their high school.
So, so, so one part of, one part of the work is actually, the, the site visits that were conducted is actually what is really working out there and what can we take back as shared best practices with, with schools that are having possibly the same challenges our schools are having. So they were not just, you know, randoms, us high schools, but actually schools that face the same type of challenges and actually have implemented a similar type of model to address. So the goal of actually the freshman academy, to your point, is actually to, to strengthen the foundation for the high school experience of that youth and build their skill sets, build their social and emotional development, so that when they get to a part, they actually begin to take ownership of their experience through what, through these pathways. So, so there's additional support such as, you know, guidance counselors, social workers, college advisors will still be part of their journey. However, the goal here is actually for them to actually be their, a, a voice in their experience. And this is why they have choice in pathways. So in the freshman academies, we, we ground them with what the foundations are, what the core requirements are, you know, the English, so that by the time they get to their sophomore, junior, and senior year, they have less and less challenges of what we're currently seeing now, right? The goal, the end, the end game here is that we'll see less ninth-grade repeaters, right? Because we're actually identifying in the middle schools, already having conversation with them in the middle schools, we already pulled the data of our current rising ninth graders and aligned them to the E, the EWEs to determine, okay, what would be the best scenario for the students, and start having conversations with them, their school, middle school principals, their families, and, and then showcasing what is ahead of them and what best fits for them. As they enter the freshman academy, and Justin will talk about also the alternative personalized pathways, we build their capacity so that they get less challenges and less of those youth development challenges as that teenagers experience today, right? You know, whether it's trauma from home, trauma from the neighborhood, that they actually see that these pathways are actually a place where they can call home, but also see success in their own experience, so that they continue to be engaging. We see increase in persistence in post-secondary. We see reduction in behavior and chronic attendance, and all of these things. We see, um, a reduction in behavior and chronic attendance, and all of these things, our end game is actually to see that actually become a, a wonderful experience for our teenagers and then reducing those, um, early warning indicators as a whole, um, in our high schools.
There's one thing that I will add, um, Madam Chair, that also connects to the presentation that Justin is going to make. The other piece to this work is the multi-tiered systems of supports. Um, we know that, um, students need supports and based on their EWEs and the intensity of the early warning indicators, they fall into what we call tiers. And, you know, the bottom tier are supports for students, um, and structures that, that are, that work for the majority of the students. So 80% of the student population will respond positively to whatever supports are in place or whatever structure are, is in place. Uh, there's a, as part of this model, um, 15% of the students, the next 15%, 80%, then there's 15 that, you know, do not respond, um, as well to those universal supports, academic or behavior supports. So we have to identify additional supports for students. And then there's, you know, that five to seven percent at the top that don't respond to those other extra supports. And so I wanted to just talk about that through that multi-tiered system of support, which by the way, is another presentation, another workshop for us to kind of wrap our, our heads around it, um, is where we, we could identify how to support those 10th graders that we know will not fare well without those structures that they had in ninth grade. And one of those, an example, is the alternative pathways.
Any other questions before we move on?
Great, thank you. All right, so we're going to transition to alternative or personalized pathways. And much in the same way that we've had a design process in place for, uh, freshman academies and career pathways, we also have a design process in place for our alternative or personalized pathways. We're going to start here with beginning to think about how are we going to redefine what alternative or personalized education looks like for students who are at most, who are most at risk of not being successful in high school. So we've come up with a tiered model that you see here, um, thinking about the introduction of these two personalized pathways, which I'll talk about in a moment, um, one at Buckley High School and one at Hartford Public High School. These are for the students who, um, have not yet really necessarily experienced failure in high school, but all signs indicate that they're not likely to be successful, given their experiences, particularly in middle school. Moving up the tiered layer of support, we then also have the opportunities for students who have experienced some high school and have not been successful in their experiences to date. Those opportunities are available, um, in, starting in April at a program called the Hope Academy, which will be run in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club on Asylum Hill, uh, or Asylum Avenue. And that program, um, will take students from Hartford Public High School, uh, about 40 of them to begin, who are in 10th or 11th grade, who have a shot of graduating within the next couple of years, um, but who really need a different kind of education, um, a different kind of support, a more personalized and smaller learning community, um, and that will be available to them at the Boys and Girls Club, um, through the Hope Academy. Similarly, we'll offer a similar model, um, at the Hope Academy, which will be a program connected to New Visions, but not necessarily, um, at the New Visions campus, uh, followed by, um, a sec, a third layer of support for opportunity, the Opportunity Academy, OPP. Currently, we have a number of students who are already enrolled in OPP. Um, oftentimes, these students end up at OPP through ways that are not necessarily centrally controlled. So we're going to try to do a better job next year to identify who is most in need of this level of support, um, and through conversations and transition planning, ensure that they are afforded access to that level of support, rather than really any student in the district just going there as their first point of entry into Hartford Public Schools. Um, and then finally, for students who just have not demonstrated success in all of the other programs that are available, um, adult education is certainly an option for them, but we want that to be a last resort after students have accessed other kinds of supports, um, throughout the district. So this is our personalized pathways timeline, um, and you'll see that it follows the structure of our freshman academy and career pathways, um, in that we've broken into three separate phases. So Phase One, the Personalized Pathways Design Team, and again, we're talking about these small programs that will be opening at Buckley High School and at Hartford Public High School next school year. We launched that work in January of 2020, um, with a small design team, um, and we began to conduct site visits and research to determine the core tenants of highly affected personalized or alternative programs. In Phase Two, which is set to launch next month, um, we will use these early warning indicators the superintendent spoke about earlier, to engage in targeted outreach, um, which is really a fundamentally different approach than what we've used in the past. Oftentimes, we know that students have early warning indicators, three or in some cases, four early warning indicators. There's little transition planning, they go to high school and they become the students who, um, end up repeating the ninth grade. We want to intervene early in order to prevent that. And then finally, in Phase Three, um, much in the same way that we are engaging in school site planning teams at the, um, career pathways in the freshman academy, we will pull individuals from Buckley High School and from Hartford Public High School, um, who will be kind of boots on the ground in each of these different programs, and will allow them to have great ownership in planning what this freshman, or rather, this personalized pathway experience looks like. So, um, in Phase One, I just want to highlight here that the team that's engaged in our, um, design work currently represents a, a cross-section of, um, the community in the district. So we've drawn from school support staff, administrators, community partners, and central office staff in order to begin conducting these site visits, um, to identify what does a high-quality personalized or alternative pathway look like, um, and what are the, the approaches that we can take from some of these other schools and bring back to Hartford and adapt given our particular context. We will hold three meetings between January and March. In fact, our last meeting is scheduled for next week, um, as we begin to wind down this first phase of our work. So very quickly, you can, um, look at this, uh, at your leisure, but we just have the design team membership, again, representing a number of individuals, um, in order to ensure a variety of voices are reflected in this important work. So we intend to conduct five site visits, um, during our design planning and workshops. We've already conducted one visit to the Boston Day and Evening Academy in Massachusetts. We sent, um, three of our team members up there. We'll be conducting a site visit at, at Impact Academy, um, located here in Hartford through Crec this Friday with a, a group of four or five individuals. Um, we then have a, a, a design, um, visit scheduled for Synergy in East Hartford next week, um, followed by Brooklyn Frontiers, and then a phone call planned for tomorrow with Chelsea Opportunity Academy, um, to identify some of the practices that they're using in order to bring that, that back to our, um, our core tenant work. Um, in addition, as you'll notice on the right-hand side, we also have this Look For's document, very similar in many ways to the Look For's document that we use with our career pathways and freshman academy design team, um, but this is specific and particular to the things that we want to look for in a personalized pathway experience. So, um, in Phase Two, this is where we begin to engage with staff and students. And I, I think the key here is that we, we know already through the data, um, that both the superintendent and the deputy superintendent have alluded to, um, that we have a number of students who have three or four early warning indicators, and we want to intervene in order to give those students the best chance of being successful in high school. So we're going to begin some targeted outreach, um, beginning in April and going through May up until the end of the school year, identifying the students who we believe would most likely benefit from this personalized pathway, having conversations with them and their families, um, in order to give them an opportunity to see why this, this pathway might be their best opportunity, um, in order to be successful in high school. We don't want this to be perceived as, um, as a punishment of any sort, right? This is really a fantastic opportunity for students to, um, be successful in school in a way that they perhaps haven't yet experienced success. Um, and so we want their families to understand that, we want them to understand that, and we certainly want the middle schools that are going to feed into these high schools to understand that. And just to give you a, a sense of where we are as a district with early warning indicators, um, this is data from this school year. Um, so if you look at the, um, the bar on the left-hand side where it says new freshman grade eight early warning indicators, so at the beginning of this school year, there were about 16% of our students. We didn't know how many early warning indicators they had because they were coming from, um, oftentimes out of district. Uh, we then had 11% of our student body who, uh, 11% of our incoming ninth graders who had three or four early warning indicators. And again, those are around attendance, behavior, academic achievement in terms of standardized test performance and grades, um, in English and in math. And then 19% had two early warning indicators, 36% one early warning indicator, and 19% no early warning indicators. Um, as of the end of January 2020, so the midpoint of the school year, you'll notice that that 16%, we now have been able to identify where they are, um, and some of them ended up in the, uh, high risk, three to four early warning indicators, some of them ended up with no, uh, early warning indicators. What we are anticipating, given where our eighth graders are currently, is that in the, the incoming freshman class of 2021 will have, um, 14% of the student body will have three or four early warning indicators, and that is really the population that we want to target in these personalized pathways.
Just, Justin, let me add that, um, you know, one of the things that we'll know will have changed by the time we welcome the freshmen next year is some of these standalone middle schools that will already have had, um, one year, um, in existence.
So since we've planned, um, to open these personalized pathways at Buckley and at Hartford Public, what we've given you here is data on how many students who are current ninth graders, first-time ninth graders, not students who have repeated the ninth grade, but first-time ninth graders at Buckley and at Hartford Public have three or four early warning indicators, are students who are most at risk. What you'll notice that, is that 19% of Buckley ninth graders currently have three or four early warning indicators, and 38% of Hartford Public High's, uh, first-time freshmen have early warning indicators. Um, underneath that, you'll notice the feeder patterns that have been established. Um, most of the students who end up at Buckley oftentimes come from these five schools. Uh, of course, there are some outliers, but, um, what we hope you, uh, see here is that both Burr and McDonough, um, as well as ESM Hooker, um, have a large number of students with early warning indicators that will likely end up at Hartford Public or at Buckley High School. Um, as we think about who to target for this work, we intend to go to those schools first, um, knowing that they have the highest need in order to ensure that they don't end up just as any other ninth grader at Hartford Public or at Buckley, but rather are encouraged to consider the personalized pathway. And so finally, um, Phase Three, which will launch in, um, late May or early June, is really intended to begin this school site planning work, um, which is so important to ensure that everyone, um, who's on the ground in the schools has a, an aligned vision to how to be successful and how to best support the students, um, who are really most at risk of not being successful in high school. There will be an assistant principal who oversees the program, as well as a small group of teachers. Um, we are capping enrollment at no more than 100 students, but really intending to, um, start smaller than that in order to build capacity of staff, uh, and ensure that this is a model that can be successful. Um, and in year one, we anticipate that we will take a number of students who are transitioning from eighth to ninth grade, um, as well as some students who are repeating ninth grade and really need a different kind of environment in order to be successful in high school.
So where do we go next? So during the 2021 school year, we intend to, uh, support and monitor implementation of the freshman academy and the career pathways, core tenants, engage with schools to co-plan the rollout of a second career pathway at each site. Apply for Bar Three funding to accelerate our design agenda and strengthen our college and career readiness programming, and strengthen the middle school experience to reduce the number of students with EWEs in grades six to eight, which means a lot of this work will also inform, um, and enhance the middle school design work, um, that has been going on, so that we can actually be intentional, um, have that, and through line between the middle school experience as well as the high school experience.
Ms. Brody.
So I see with the, um, that for Weaver or Kinsella, we did not have a breakout as far as the early warning, um, indicators and feeder schools. So I don't, I'm just wondering why we didn't have that. And I'm also wondering how, um, Global being in the north end of Hartford, how is that a feeder school for Buckley on a south end and not Weaver? I know we've had, in our public comment, it's been mentioned, um, a couple times. I don't know that, uh, answer was given or if it was ever addressed, but I'm just wondering why their feeder school would be on the other side of town and not, uh, uh, Weaver, their a north end high school in their neighborhood.
Yeah, so we're talking about two different things. Um, this is with regard to the alternative pathways, which we, then feedback for us around clarifying, um, from a communication perspective, right? That the, the feeder, uh, Ms. Brody, with regard to their high school is Weaver, but given that the alternative pathways are going to start at the other two high schools, if we had a student at Global that had those early warning indicators and, um, wanted to take advantage of the alternative pathway, they could access it at, uh, Buckley.
Okay, so currently, and just in regards of, um, pathways, how we describe them, Weaver, well, Global feeds into Weaver. Is that true or no?
Looking at Sherry, yes.
So, um, we know that there's been a partnership between Global and Buckley, um, for, I believe this last year, for the, the current high school, as we transition that school from, uh, K to eight. Students coming who live in that zone, one or two, are able to apply to Weaver or continue with the Global class at Buckley.
Is there a weight, cause I know years back when we had, when, like, when the lottery is run or built into the algorithm that it kind of, I know, I know more for magnet schools. It's like, um, STEM and university high. It's like, it is a little heavier weight, cause it's the, so are we saying that, um, the likelihood, like, is, well, I take that back. Is there any, um, preference? I think that's a term that's used when we do lotteries. Is there a preference to, with the Global-Buckley relationship in, in the, in the lottery?
The families were, um, told that they have an automatic pathway to Buckley. If they were interested in any other school, that they should apply.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms., Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I have a clarifying question that's actually going to help me to frame any additional questions that I may have. Do you happen to have like an appendix that has a list of what the EWEs are? That would be so helpful for me.
Uh, let me just see if we did not include that one. Oh, wait, slide five.
Thank you.
While you're looking at that, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Oliver?
Yeah, so I want to make sure I, I understand, so again, thank you for, uh, Justin, for the, uh, presentation on the, um, personalized pathways. Um, so it sounds as if we're looking to identify students as rising ninth graders. So there's a possibility that you would not therefore at all be in Hartford High or Buckley, et cetera. So is it fair to state, though, if you're in ninth grade and all of a sudden you're struggling, you're also eligible for these programs and 10th, et cetera, right? So it's trying to follow the, um, the image you had as like a little kind of tiered continuum there? One of the things you mentioned was trying to make sure this was not viewed as punitive because it sounds as if we're going to target families and have those conversations with them, but it may not be mandatory. Would somebody still be part of Hartford High? Would they still be part of Buckley? Would they, you know, especially, I guess, those, I guess you could ask the question all the way up, part of Hope Academy or et cetera. But I mean, so in other words, would they be able to still access the full student experience in addition to having the additional supports around them for the personalized pathways?
So, so as we are building out these personalized pathways, the intentionality around these personalized pathway is actually to create kind of, in a sense, a cohort of students to, to, to build kind of their skill sets and their areas of needs. Their, their experience there or their schedule, let's say, will be unique to their needs. So they will not probably, they probably will not have the same type of schedule as a, as a ninth grader who is probably in the freshman academy because it's going to be tailored to a personalized experience and needs. So will they have access to kind of the usage of the facilities such as physical education and things of that sorts, sports? Yes, right? However, they're probably, their schedule or probably even their day might be different than that of the student in the freshman academy. They might have a different start time just because what we're seeing in the research is that we really have to customize it to really support the student's experience so that there might be a time where that ninth grader actually really wants to have a conversation with their guidance counselor or administrator, say, I want to go to the computer sciences pathway. And has built kind of the skills and the foundations to be able to say, all right, you, you're ready to go. We've built their capacity, their skills, and so forth. So there is some fluidity in actually be able to transition to pathways within the school.
Okay, thank you for that clarification because that was very helpful. So they could also end up going back into a pathway. One thing that I'll note is I've had the privilege to attend graduations for both Adult Education and Opportunity Academy. And the concept of school spirit and full school experience is very important to the students. So as the, because I think we're, we're still in the process, right? This one's a little lagging a little further behind than the other one. I would just encourage to continue to have that perspective and overlay that because it almost, let me just say, the school spirit at both of those schools are very strong. And yet they're a smaller number of students most times, so I would hope that that would be able to continue on. So I'll let somebody else ask a question. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Now that I'm all read up on my IWEs for coming late. So these are really interesting metrics that we're using to create a whole framework. Is there research that supports this? Like where were the IWEs developed and how do we come to use this as kind of like the grounding framework for this whole strategy that we're creating? And do we think that they're the right metrics to look at?
Yeah, so the answer is yes, there was research. And certainly, we do believe that these are the right metrics. That's certainly what research tells us. It's not just Hartford which uses these, right? There are other districts across the state that look at the same kinds of indicators as they think about how do we best support students, particularly in this eighth to ninth grade transition year, but also throughout high school.
If I may, so I'm just thinking about like unpacking some of these individually and how it may look different in our district when we're thinking about maybe things like discipline, how that may impact a student's, you know, rate of out of school suspension or even, you know, attendance. And we, we've kind of worked the, the calendar that we've tabled, right? The school calendar for the next academic year. But we were even looking at, you know, dip days where there's chronic absenteeism on particular days because our district might look a little different around holidays and that sort of thing. So I'm just always looking at, because this is the foundation for what we're doing, just wondering if there's like an additional data point that we might need to look like, look at that's district specific for us based on our own demographics and our own kind of practices here.
So, thank you, Ms. Taylor. I have a couple of quick questions. So for, for Weaver High School with, or even all of the schools with the nine Rs, they will be able to access these alternative programs, correct? And so with the two opportunities for the one at Buckley High School and Hartford Public High School, I'm assuming that those who are nine Rs at Weaver, well, let me not assume, let me ask the question. Where would they go if they were looking to go to a personalized pathway? More specifically, this is kind of going around the school pride kind of thing. Yeah, I just want to know where would they go?
So it's, in our initial work, it is actually to provide them access to either one depending on, on their need and the conversations we've had. What we've seen currently with the current Hope Academies that we have, and, and some of them actually, one of them actually have students from the three high schools, while the other one's more of Hartford High. The feedback we receive from the students has been very positive in a sense of their experience because they find it, they find the personalized smaller group setting, the attention as, as, as support and engaging for their environment. So, and, and what has not surfaced is that, you know, I'm from this high school, not this high school. They're actually now seeing themselves as a core of peers, learning in this new unique environment to support each other. Have students actually want to come back to the high school? Yes, some have. And others actually want to stay there and say, I like this, this, this opportunity. It's different and, and don't want to come back, which, which we see as, as something positive, but sometimes challenging because they're actually still assigned to that, their home school. So moving forward, that is one of the criterias we're looking at is actually the, the flexibility of how those programs enroll students and how actually we, we keep those students in the program and how long do we keep them in the program? But also allowing them, again, to have their voice in their experience and say, you know, I would like to be here because this is working for me and I'm receiving a quality experience of in teaching and learning, or I want to go back to my home school and participate in a pathway and allowing that flexibility.
Okay, thank you. And so a part of that with the going back and forth, I'm, I'm wondering for those who want to do sports, like where would they go? What school would they be a part of? And how will that happen? And then I have one other question, but I'll defer to my other colleagues prior to me asking that one.
So, so it's, it's our understanding that part of the experience is the experience as a whole. So sports, the access to extracurricular activities, programs, access to sports programs will be available to them in their home school. Now, that all depends also on, depending on each unique case, because there are some students that actually might want the work-study program and then they want that opportunity to actually do an internship instead of going to, to part, so that is also part of the experience. So it's not just, we're not looking at just around sports and extracurricular, but also internship partnerships, mentorships. Some of them might want to actually work with a higher ed partner when doing some other types of, of programming. So we're, so availability to those type of programs and access to those programs will be available to the students regardless of where, what program they select as part of their experience.
Ms. Oliver?
So I have a question in terms of the numbers. One of the things I think I heard you say, Justin, is that looking at capping first year at about 100 students, based on the graph, I'm seeing somewhere between 171 to 205 based on the three to four IWEs, right? So, so understanding this is a rollout, we need to be very thoughtful about that, and I appreciate that. Tell me a little bit about how we're going to determine if this is successful and then how it's going to further scale, because it seems as if we need to increase that number in terms of our capacity.
So, so ideally, so in speaking, in speaking, in looking at the research, but also speaking with the partners, because part of the bar work is actually working with a cohort of school districts who are all in this unique. So we have from Providence to, I forget the other school district, but, but we're all part of the cohort and learning from each other experiences. It was very clear and was made very clear to us that the success of these alternative programs is that they are actually in small, unique settings that are not in, in the traditional high school environment. So even, even logistically, they, they were very clear that the success and based on the research that they have, that these models work as when students are actually in a separate location, receiving those supports and those personalized attention. So, so even, and a good example is even as we talked about Buckley's, you know, redesign work. The building is actually built, is being built with a wing just for this alternative pathway to exist with their own teaming, their own assistant principal, classroom space and so forth. While they're still on campus, they're actually going to be, have their, their own personalized setting to support their work. So, so the, so we have to monitor the number and success. Ideally, because of, because of the program's ability to be fluid, some of these students will probably transition back into a, a, a career or themed pathway, which would allow other students to have that opportunity. But at the same time, it's also, to your point, Ms. Oliver, looking at those other opportunities, the Hope Academies, the OPPs, where other students need to be because not even, the alternative setting might not be the best fit for them at that time. So it's building the capacity out of those programmings because at the end of the day, all of those numbers are part of the overall enrollment of the school. So it's not like we're adding an additional 100 students. It's actually, that 100 students is part of the total building enrollment of Buckley, even budgetarily. So it's not that we're adding additional 100 students. It's actually, those 100 students will be linked to the school's budget as part of the alternative program. And the same is for Hartford High and so forth. So we're being very intentional monitoring that when it talks about sustainability, but also I think there are benchmarks that we have in place to Dr. Garcia Lockers' point where we do go check in. These, these committees will not exit at the end of the redesign work. They're actually be ongoing. As you know, those community partners are critical to actually continue to inform, continue to provide input and to continue to monitor the success of all of these pathways, including the alternative, to making sure that we are doing it right and also refining it as, as, as need be based on student needs.
Just want to also add that, you know, it's an opportunity for us as we do the, the design work to think about the numbers, given that, you know, mo, most of our students have at least one IWE. This is, this is information that we know from our Hartford Opportunity, the HOE-CI table. And so we have to think about, you know, our selection criteria. And this probably gets to Ms. Taylor, your comment as to the IWEs as the only, you know, lens for us to look at because the research does say that these experiences are best, serve our students best when they're in smaller numbers. And so already, the IWEs indicate a larger number of students. And so are we then, you know, going to, you know, risk the integrity of the program? So it's something that we have to think about. So thank you both for lifting that, which, which is something that we saw last summer when we lifted the IWEs in trying to identify the summer bridge program, right? We had so many students that fit that lens with the IWEs and we know we weren't able to provide the access for all.
So I just have, so I said I'll let someone else go. So for program design moving forward, one of my concerns that kind of comes up is that we're designing a program that's personalized and specialized to help support, which is great. My thoughts are, once these young people graduate, they're doing well, are we setting them up for success? Because in a work environment, they might not necessarily have the support systems that we're providing them. And/or if they're going to post-secondary education, how will that look? So I'm just curious of, is there a thought process as once they're moving through and the supports might be pulling out a little bit, what happens to our young people?
So that's a great, that's a great question. And that's, I think that one, one of the things of, in the quantitative and the qualitative analysis is looking at the pulse, the persistence when it comes to post-secondary success. And that includes college or career success moving forward. One of the things, and, and I can allow one of my colleagues to elaborate, is, is that advisory component that we're talking about in the high school, which is around building those skill sets to deal, deal with life challenges, right? To understand, you know, you know, financial literacy or to understand, you know, stress, to understand, you know, what it means to, to conflict resolution and things, to be able to build those, those developmental skills that might not be there when they graduate or, or might be, or they will have to deal with it as adults when they, when they graduate. But I think at the same time, if we think about, you know, being a former high school principal, you want also students to come back as alumni and, and see also their high schools as an ongoing support and come back and see those mentors who have, you know, made an influence. One of the things that we've been also clear is that we want to see, and this came out of the task force, is that we want to make sure that every student during their high school experience has an adult that would advocate for them and make those building relationships so that that, that advocate is someone who is not probably the teacher that's grading or giving the exams, but actually becomes that person that's going to advocate and be that adult role model to teach them things about life around dealing with, you know, life challenges that might go beyond the high school experience.
And then I guess I would also add that our, our portrait of a graduate, which we think will really help us to lead this work moving forward, will also certainly apply to what we envision for our students in these personalized pathways. And so we really want to make sure that our curriculum and our instructional practices are supporting students so that they have these competencies that have been tested by industry partners and higher ed partners. And so certainly, if, if we're doing it right, they will have mastered some of these skills, which we know will transfer to success once they graduate.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Oliver?
So I'll keep it quick. You don't have to directly answer this. One of the things that I would encourage as I see like next steps, we just talked about some key things around youth development and some other things. I'd really be interested as this moves forward, earlier on the freshman academy, as well as our pathways, it talks about the bucket for family and community partnerships and connecting with community. A lot of the work right now feels very internal. There are some key partners from community, but it seems somewhat limited. And as this work continues to grow, I think a couple of things. One is what opportunities does the district have to push this information out to our community partners, to give them an update, to kind of go back around, right, and to check in? And I also think there may be other community partners who may be interested in helping, who've been working in this population, worked for a while and, you know, and, and one of the other things I was thinking of, the college and cur- readiness piece, I feel like my members at All In would, I think I'm remiss if I don't say this, but like, you know, we'd also talked about in addition to the portrait of graduate, how do you overlay these other key things, whether the, a work-based learning standard, whether all these other key things that we think is important for success for our young people? And so I would love to see that as part as the next phase. And I think that would be really important. I know that there are partners that I know directly, they'll take this PowerPoint and they would be excited and would want to really look at their own design and make sure they're aligning with the district. So, but thank you very much. I think job holds on. Thank you.
So I'll, we do have another all call that's coming up. We're getting ready to send that information out and we'll do essentially the same thing that we did when we introduced the IWEs to, one, the entire community, share the framework and do the all call for potential partnerships to help us around this work. And, you know, All In. And, you know, All In and specifically Paul Holzer, you know, has, there's been a connection there and I know that we're going to continue to have a conversation since I went to the last All In coalition and talked about those, you know, just a crosswalk to ensure that, that that happened. So lots of conversation that's going to be coming up, not only around this work, but also the portrait of a graduate and also the instructional vision for the district, right? This is, these are programmatic structural changes, but this will mean absolutely nothing unless there is alignment with the curriculum, right? The curriculum and the actual practice, right? The pedagogy, the teaching. And so there's, this is, that work that had to happen after we were nearing the end, which is where we are now of the DME and all those shifts, right? Now we get to making sure that the, the core, what is called in, in the world of education, the instructional core comes alive, and that is the interaction between the curriculum, what the student is experiencing and what the teacher is delivering.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. You guys worked hard on this. We appreciate it.
Can I just have a plug for the team? Just want to say thank you for all the great work. Yes to the presenters, but there has been a lot of work behind the scenes around this. And one of the things that I just want to lift, and I've told this to my team, is, you know, it has required that we just build our muscle around cross-departmental work. It is not the culture that existed here before in terms of, you know, it, the work was very siloed and so there's still a lot of opportunity for us, but, you know, in terms of our work in central office among departments, this is one of the highlights for us. So chief, you know, the just academics, family and community engagement, the design team, just office of school. So kudos to everyone for stretching ourselves.
Awesome. Thank you.
So we're moving on to the adjournment. Is there a motion? Is there a move? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconding all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sure there's no nays. Have a great night.